Good morning. This is November 12th, 2019, day after Veterans Day. And Tuesday, and I'm calling to order the meeting of the Story County Board of Supervisors, and we'd invite you to join and assist to see the pledge of allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, one ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody. The next thing on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda, and I believe there might be change to the agenda. So are there changes? Sure. Under consent agenda item, I'd like to pull the item that talks about Leadership Ames and one of our employees go. That turns out has major scheduling conflicts with the session for Leadership Ames and the schedule of our staff. So we're going to have to look at maybe putting that out until next year. Okay. Are there any other changes to the agenda? If not, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda as revised. I must hold it.
Yes.
Wilson?
Aye.
Goodness. Okay, aye. Agenda's come up. Thank you. Next is public comment number one. In this comment period, for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anybody who would like to address a topic, please move to the microphone. Seeing that anyone moved to the microphone, I close public comment number one. Next, we have Kathy Johnson from Community Services, who is going to talk with us a little bit about the issues of hunger and homelessness awareness and reclamation for us.
Thank you. Thank you, Lynda. And before I do that, I just wanted to take a minute to thank all of you on behalf of my colleagues who are here, who work every day with people who are experiencing homelessness, unemployment, homelessness, food insecurity. It's a problem. And I don't want to spend time with a bunch of statistics. We have a lot of them in Story County. I do think that most people are surprised to know we do have a lot of them. But we work every day to try to prevent homelessness for individuals and families here, to deal with people who don't have any idea maybe of where healthy, good nutritious food for them and their family is going to come from next. And I really appreciate the opportunity for us to try to raise more awareness here in Story County that this is a problem that we have.
So that being said, for the record, Kathy, would you like to introduce the people who are with you today?
Well, I will. Yes, I'll let them introduce themselves. Lynda, Annika, if you want to say something?
Hi, everybody. I'm Hannah Turner, and I'm...
Oh, okay. Well, then I will do it. Lynda Mundin is the Director of Emergency Residents Project, and they're very, very much involved in...
I'm just the Housing and Volunteer Director.
That's right. Housing and Volunteer Director. But the Chair of the Two Rivers Organization, which is really addressing our homeless issue here in Story County, and Annika Mundell, who is the new Director of Community Impact, Director of United Way. And I work with Annika on lots of issues that have to do with hunger and homelessness here in Story County. And there are many other organizations here. I'm going to mention them in the proclamation that are working to address this problem here in Story County. So we'd really welcome this opportunity to be here today. That being said, whereas for the past 27 years, the National Coalition for the Homeless and the National Student Campaign Against Hunger and Homelessness have sponsored National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. And whereas, the purpose of the proclamation is to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing in Story County for very low-income residents, and to encourage support for homeless assistance service providers, as well as community service opportunities for students and school organizations. And whereas, there are many organizations committed to sheltering and providing supportive services, as well as meals and food supplies to the homeless, which include but are not limited to Assault Care Center Extending Shelter and Support, Emergency Residents Project, Food at First, Good Neighbor Emergency Assistance, Mid-Iowa Community Action, Story County Community Services, The Hunger Collaboration, the Salvation Army, Veterans Affairs, Youth and Shelter Services. Whereas, the focus of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2019 continue to volunteer donate, educate. And whereas, the Story County Board of Supervisors recognizes that hunger and homelessness continues to be a serious problem for many individuals and families in Story County. And whereas, the intent of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the commitment and dedication of the members of the Two Rivers Committee and the Homelessness Prevention Team to educate the community and to provide the needed services and support to citizens who suffer from hunger and/or homelessness circumstances.
I asked you to read the rest of that because of your recent work, longstanding work on housing issue and your recent work on the issue of...
Well, thank you. I'm blessed to be with these people today and all of you. Therefore, we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim November 16th through 24th, 2019, as National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. On behalf of our community, we encourage all citizens to recognize that many people do not have housing and need support from citizens of public, private partnership service entities. Thank you.
People want to get a picture?
Yeah.
It's okay. People just want to come here and... Somebody who can take the picture. Me and Smokey here.
No, she's in the...
Yeah.
She's trying to walk around.
Yeah, there you are. That was great. We have another proclamation now.
We have to approve it.
Prove it. Okay.
I thought we got the picture.
I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation.
I admit that we approve the proclamation recognizing National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness.
I second. Discussion? Peddles?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Berkin?
Aye.
Okay. Now, we go on. We have another proclamation. And Lynda Agador, President of the League Women Voters in Story County, is with us. And we're going to kind of all read this one together, not at the same time in sequence. So, Lynda, whatever you would like to say to introduce this.
Sure. This is the 100th anniversary of the passage of the 19th Amendment that gave women the right to vote. It also happens to be the 100th anniversary for the lead of women voters. And in honor of that, we have asked several cities and the county to have to sign a proclamation declaring the year for the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. Whereas, in 1848, people gathered together in Seneca Falls, New York, and cited the unfairness of depriving women of the right to vote. And whereas, a fight for women's suffrage from the first Women's Rights Convention to enfranchisement lasted more than 72 years, with women from all walks of life, political views, and demographic backgrounds asking for the right to voice their opinions at the polls. And whereas, Iowa women by the thousands advocated for the right to vote, and suffrages nationwide turned to public education and persuasion. They held conferences, campaigned, lobbied, marched, pleaded, petitioned, and suffered public disdain, violent opposition, and prison. And whereas, suffrages pushed for a single constitutional amendment granting female suffrage on the federal level, dubbed the Susan B. Anthony Amendment.
And whereas, Carrie Chapman Kat led the national movement, meeting with President Woodrow Wilson to secure his support for suffrage in light of women's contributions during World War I. And whereas, it took male allies to support women in their endeavor to vote, for it was sons, husbands, and fathers who also really heard the calls of women. And the House of Representatives took a historic vote on May 21, 1919, followed by a Senate on June 4, 1919. And three-fourths of the states met to ratify the 19th Amendment. And whereas, Iowa was the 10th state to ratify the 19th Amendment on July 2, 1919. And Tennessee was the 36th state to ratify the 19th Amendment, making the law of the land on August 26, 1920, whereby millions of women were enfranchised. And whereas, the introduction, passage, and ultimate ratification of the 19th Amendment were the culmination of decades of work and struggle by advocates for the rights of women across the United States. And whereas, the ratification of the 19th Amendment ensured women could more fully participate in our democracy and fundamentally changed the role of women in civic life of our nation. And whereas, most of the women who began asking for the right to vote never lived to see the infringement of women. And whereas, the daughters, granddaughters, and great-granddaughters of the women who fought so hard to vote have been making their voices heard at the polls for nearly 100 years.
And whereas, women are running for office in unprecedented numbers. Many current politicians, both male and female, remember that they follow in the footsteps of these great suffrages. And whereas, the centennial anniversary of the ratification of the 19th Amendment represents a historical milestone to be lauded and celebrated. Now, therefore, we are resolved that we, the Story County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim calendar year 2020 to the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration. And in memory of the 100th anniversary of the passage and ratification of the 19th Amendment providing for women's suffrage of the Constitution of the United States, and we honor the role of the ratification of the 19th Amendment in further promoting the core values of our democracy as promised by the Constitution of the United States, we reaffirm the opportunity for people in the United States to learn about and commemorate the efforts of the Women's Suffrage Movement and the role women have in our democracy. And we reaffirm the desire of Iowa citizens to continue strengthening democratic participation and to inspire future generations to cherish and preserve this story precedent established under the 19th Amendment. So I would entertain a motion to adopt the proclamation.
I would so long that we adopt the proclamation declaring this the 19th Amendment Centennial Commemoration in 2020.
I'll second that motion.
Further discussion?
I just wanted to say, full disclosure, the three of us are members of the League Women Voters.
And Thomas are former presidents.
And Thomas are former presidents.
Okay. Further discussion? Peddles?
Aye.
Wilson?
Aye.
Berkin?
Aye.
Photo?
Photo.
Would you like? Are there any other lead members in the audience who would like to join us? Mr. Pluss?
No.
Okay. This one is weird. Very complex.
All right.
We're taking a step this way. Are we good now?
Yeah.
Just a second. Okay. I think that's very special to all of us, to be able to do that. So thank you very much for bringing the proclamation. So now, we are on to agency reports. Workforce Solutions and Economic Development Quarterly Report, we have Brent Dreyer and Justin Ainge with us.
Good morning, Story County Supervisors.
Good morning.
We're excited to be here today to visit and give you an update as it relates to our workforce solutions efforts, as well as our efforts to support the rural communities of Story County in their economic development efforts. I'm going to start our comments today by giving you a snapshot of some of the things that we're doing as it relates to workforce and highlight our efforts in the third quarter. Story County unemployment for the month of September, we were at 1.5%, not the lowest in the state of Iowa, but certainly if you look at the MSAs across the country, the lowest at that particular level. It's a long, long kind of recap of the numbers behind 1.5%. But the number to highlight there is as a year, looking back a year and where we sat until the end of September, we were at 1,400 jobs, which if you think about that, that is amazing. And our businesses of all sizes are continuing to reinvest in their operations. Some of the projects that we worked on last year are indeed hiring people. They're doing what they said they were going to do. And so it's exciting to be able to see that number at that level. October numbers should be here anytime. Those will be interesting numbers as well. Typically, we drop even lower than our September numbers as we move into harvest and some of those things like that. So just an important number and something we're always tracking every month and reporting at the AEDC and the Chamber level. We just have wrapped up an event that we were able to participate in with the Technology Association of Iowa. I think everybody's very aware of the number of technology-related opportunities we have across business sectors in Story County. This has been a strong partnership. They are adding new people to their database every month, and we actively promote Ames and Story County to those pins every month. And then this is the second meetup that we've actually participated in with the group. And we had 80 folks registered. The governor was actually supposed to attend, but we had really bad weather in Denver at the end of October. And I'm surprised I even got out of there when I did. I was delayed a couple days getting out because of the bad weather. But we had 80 folks register for that event, which is more than the event we had in the Twin Cities. We had about 40 people actually able to make the event with the bad weather. But it's interesting to note, we had left with about 10 folks that we felt really had strong interest in our marketplace. And I had a conversation with one of our employers this morning, and we're going to be doing a virtual introduction with one of the candidates we met. So a young lady that was educated here in Iowa, grew up in Iowa, and has had her fill of Colorado. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we may have a match very quickly actually coming off of that event. So stay posted. And again, we're very dedicated to making sure that we're following up with the opportunities that come as relationship to the Technology Association. A couple other things that I want to highlight. We continue to participate in virtual career fairs in our areas where we really have some high needs. And so engineering and science, we participated in that. In that event in the third quarter, we kicked away with 350 leads that expressed a willingness to relocate. So there were much more, many more people registered for the event, but we've really focused our efforts on those folks that have said that they would consider moving from where they might be. So those are longer-term relationships that we continue to market working aims and the opportunities we have in this particular area. We're getting ready to have our last career fair of the year. We're excited that this particular career fair is going to happen here in Nevada. We are looking at the BURK opportunities starting to happen really after the first quarter. And the unemployment in Marshall County continues to be much higher than Story. And I think it's a good opportunity to try to hit the employers that are here in the Nevada market, get them to maybe participate. If they haven't participated, and the best will be those employers that find their way from Ames to Nevada to Iowa State. We've got room for about 20 to 22 folks at this Story County conference space. And so excited to be able to get that rolling. I do anticipate that as we move into 2020, that we'll always probably have a commitment to have one of those job fairs here in Nevada. We just have a lot of job opportunities here, and it puts us a little closer to Marshall County. We are doing some trial till the end of the year with some new things that we haven't done in the past with marketing. So we're doing some unique advertising with the Daily. Again, about trying to remind our 35-plus thousand students that there's real opportunities for work while they're at Iowa State and after, when they graduate. So we've seen some really strong numbers on open rates on the ads, online ads with the Daily. And we're doing some podcasts with Chris Williams and the Cycle Fanatics. So you think about what do folks, how do we differentiate ourselves, trying to reach a broader audience? And so we're excited here while the football season and getting into basketball season to test a little bit of those podcasts with that strong base of folks that, for the most part, we've never heard have had a bad experience in Story County during the time in Iowa State. So stay posted, and hopefully after the first of the year, we'll be able to really dig into some of the marketing results. But again, pushing the word out beyond our borders that there's great jobs and great opportunities here. We're also gearing up for a Future Ready Iowa Summit on November 19. I know Boris has went through the process to register and welcome anyone here to seize that opportunity. It has an employer focus. That doesn't mean you have to, I guess you're our employers, a large employer, but we're going to be covering apprenticeships, upskilling existing workforce, project-based learning, engaging underutilized populations, and then talking about state funding support to enhance some of those items. And so we have some of our existing employers and some of our providers talking about some of the things that we're doing in each of those areas. But I like it because it really starts early in the morning, and we'll be out of there by 9:30. And our friends at the research park are actually hosting that event. So excited. I think it will be the last one of the year that I'm glad we'll be able to get that in and get folks thinking about their 2020 plans. And just a couple other things that I want to talk about. The pilot is replaced, a Chamber program that was called Youth Leadership Ames. And as we've been working to engage youth at younger levels and exposing them to opportunities, Pilot has really become part of our workforce efforts. We've just wrapped up our second session on inclusion. And we have a real commitment to move that around Story County. The inclusion event actually occurred here in Nevada. We have three remaining sessions to happen in the first and second quarter of 2020 to coincide with the school year. Those topics named leadership, opportunity, and teamwork. It's open to all Story County area schools, and our students are self-selected to participate. So they don't have to be nominated. They don't have to be at the top of their class. It's those that are motivated to attend to actually seize this opportunity. So we've actually created some leadership opportunities for students that are moving through the program to be involved in that program. Next year, we have our Youth Leadership Ames students actually are leading it, helping us lead it this year. But a great opportunity for our young folks and would appreciate everybody's assistance in getting the word out. There's no cost to the school districts. There's no cost to students. The next event is actually on January 31. As we look ahead to 2020, and again, our workforce efforts would not be where they're at today without the support of the Story County Supervisors. Because of your investment, we are able to really run a robust countywide effort. We are committed to doing that as we look ahead to 2020. Wanted to give you a glimpse, a little bit into the work plan that I'm putting together, that we're putting together for workforce as an organization. So you'll hear a little bit about a Future Ready Portal that the state is rolling out. We hope to do a little bit more with that. We'll certainly be promoting that link. But that program will be called SOAR. We want to be connecting businesses and classrooms across the county, and that portal will be the way that we do that. We've had a pretty good-sized career fair at Ames, and we've had a little career fair over at Colo. And we want to do a countywide career fair next year. And how that looks and when that happens, and logistically, how we pull that off. I think it's important that all of our students have an opportunity. And by taking that in-house, I feel pretty confident we're going to get that done. So we have a real commitment to doing that in 2020. We'll continue to work with the Technology Association of Iowa. We want to do even more with them as our need for technology opportunities grows. And we're going to need their connections to connect with some of those folks. I'm real excited about a Women in Manufacturing event that will be working with Iowa Works as well as United Way to actually host that event in April. We'll bring in our manufacturers. We'll talk about opportunities. But stay posted. That'll be an evening event in April, and we'll make sure you all have an invitation to attend that. That'll be something new that we want to do. And we had planned to do a parent and student event around manufacturing this year, and we just didn't get that quite pulled off. So that'll be in the work plan for 2020. And again, trying to look at areas to continue to feature our opportunities. So I would say we have about 1,610 openings, but I checked yesterday. The great thing about our job opportunities is that they're really scattered amongst a number of sectors. So we continue to have a lot of educational openings, healthcare openings, great manufacturing opportunities, and then IT. And so that's again, one of the ways that we're unique is because we do have a really diverse number of jobs in a lot of different sectors. So with that, I would welcome any comments or questions you have related to our efforts in the workforce area.
I just have one question. I think you guys are doing great work on stuff, really getting outside of Ames. I mean, Ames certainly needs the assistance as well, but small communities certainly need the assistance because they want to maintain their or grow their economic vitality, community vitality. Just one question. I'm not sure if you said this on your education order. Did you say there was something called SOAR? So SOAR is going to be how we brand that portal on our websites that actually creates an opportunity for businesses to indicate their interest in being able to host students, as well as the schools to be able to say, we're looking for an engineer to come talk about, you know. So it'll be a place where we can exchange in a clearinghouse, and it'll really be the state's efforts will...
house and it'll really be, the state's efforts will be there as well because sometimes we know that it goes beyond our own borders. You know, you think about the opportunity maybe for an engineer at Emerson would be different than maybe our engineers. And so that's why I think making sure that we include the state portal, but build on that and that the name of that portal is going to be called SOAR.
Okay. The reason I brought it up because there is under the Sansa Health and Services, I'm just saying that acronyms are already used.
It is, it is. It not addresses homelessness and an outreach to get people signed up for security benefits. So I just want to make sure you know that or distinguish. That, that's a very good point. And so we haven't, Laura's will see that logo on Friday at the A D C, but we have not. But I think maybe we want to revisit that just from a confusion standpoint and certainly a lot of our other efforts to work with underserved populations. We have a number of efforts there as well, as you all know. So I think that's a good point, Lisa. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from the board?
I have a comment to pass on about the engagement of youth. And I just want to make note that when I went to future-ready AHS and I asked each one of my groups even though I was there to discuss financial issues or financial planning and preparedness, but out of all of the students I did see, there were only three who indicated that they weren't going on to post-secondary education. One, and one of the three already knew what he was doing because he was working at Menards. He already had a full-time offer for probably a sales supervisor, floor supervisor, and then he thought he might go in the military later on. But on the other two, they were not really aware of what they would be able to do that they would include post-secondary education. So now this is Ames and so I just want to pass that on to you going forward as you reach out. Both of them, I think, would have been interested in some kind of shorter training program. I think it was financial interest that they were looking to earn money from.
So the interesting thing was I actually participated in the CYAT, the CYAT, the School Improvement Advisory Committee for Ames last night. And that was one of the things that I mentioned was, is that at some point in time, like an opportunity to chat with that group about ensuring that we're using every opportunity to expose our kids to just all of the things that are available. And yeah, I think what an addition of Menards has been, I mean, they've created some full-time opportunities, some opportunities to advance to management, I think just broadening the look of things. And again, I think that's going to be part of, of being able to do a countywide, countywide fair with again, some breakouts about career and technical education. But I appreciate that feedback, Laura, because we have, we have, we have an interesting message to try to push out there for so many years. I mean, obviously we love it when folks go to a four-year university, specifically Iowa State, but I think we need to try to make sure we're meeting the needs of all students. And I think a real commitment as well to retraining some of our folks that, that aren't, haven't been able to be matched to kind of some of the newer jobs we have available. And I know Supervisor Morgan and I have all sit on the leadership group to the Story County College Access Network. While it sounds like we're going to push everybody to college, an important aspect of that and the scope of that is really going to be retraining and certificate programs to new folks. So we have some neat things I think in the pipeline. It's going to take a little time, but we're here for the long haul to try to have impact in some of these areas. It's the right thing to do, but I'd say when you're looking at 1.5% unemployment, you have to make sure we're, we're doing that to be able to attract everybody to the workplace that we can. So thanks. Any other Supervisor Morgan?
I was just going to see if Justin had any feedback.
Oh, he does. He does. I'm going to turn the mic over. Yeah.
This one's calling in.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll go to the economic development outreach portion of the presentation. Just to start out here, I want to, I want to speak about the Economic Development Leader Summit that each of you attended. We see that again as a huge success and really a turning point for some of our communities and the types of synergy that we can build between any of them, just based on who attended. So we had approximately seventy attendees show up. Some launched earlier in the day, we had some state leaders and that kind of thing that, that headed out to other community events, but throughout the day, we've had about seventy attendees, which I think is remarkable, way beyond any expectation that we at least initially have for our communities. The initial thought was that we wanted to bring the key leaders and the key stakeholders together, they can see council members and state clerks and so forth. But the attendance really reflected a much broader spectrum than that, which we're very happy to see. I have the topics here listed that you attended and you're aware of the topics we discussed. And then we also sent out surveys later on to get feedback. Almost all the feedback was very positive. I know there was some constructive comments as well about which kind of sessions could be useful in the future. One question and discussion that we had in our office, just among our staff, is how frequently do we hold this event? How regularly do we host it? Is it once a year, once every two years, and what have you? And there was significant interest, at least in terms of the feedback that we received. Then our communities want to see this every single year, at least in some shape or form. So that again reflects and indicates that demand for this kind of knowledge that our communities have. And ultimately, the biggest takeaway to me was that it shows the engagement of all of our towns. We have people there who are really eager to make change in their communities. We have representation from Ames there too. You just mentioned actually rural vitality. Part of that's about learning from one another. And I think there's a lot to learn from Ames, it's sort of a big brother community, so to speak. But it was great seeing Ames there interacting with the communities, experiencing the colleagues and so forth. So thank you all for your support. Just a shout out to you as well for your support and collaboration.
And with all the praise, I think I already said about this, as far as really, who was at the table? That I was impressed that there were several members of the housing development community there. There was a couple lenders there, there, and plus there were some actual developers, if you will. And that, they don't come for the Story County Economic Development Group. That's just somebody from each of the small communities and yes, and Ames. But so kudos to that for getting the people out that need to be part of the conversation that normally don't come to the government-related.
Thank you. I don't mention the annuals integral and planning this event as well. So I'm very thankful for your support and collaboration as well.
Good job.
So the next thing, I'd like to talk a little bit about downtown revitalization just because there's a lot of it going on throughout the county. I found out today, actually the mayor of Zering has assured me that tonight in her council meeting, they will set lease rates for the Zering, really, lease for the rental component of that as they complete restoration, but there are opportunities to lease certain units. He says they're not going to leave tonight, he totally set that lease rate. So let you know what that is when I hear back. Cambridge has also proceeded on the Opera House, a former American Legion building restoration project. They really phased this out and I think are a very intelligent way to make financially a smart way, I guess, to go about in terms of how their building lacking matches from certain grants and so forth, which we call that, some of that project, they're calling for first. If you recall the description of this project, there's a minimal addition piece to it, it's about the back portion of that building is not original to the structure. And so they're going to be removing that and creating an addition to allow homeless and privileged for housing. And so we're going to look at the Iowa Department of Natural Resources, they're looking at building grant for this. I know there's a session you mentioned a few days ago on this grant, but basically it provides things like asbestos text, asbestos testing, structural remediation, renovation in certain cases, covers 100% of these things, mostly up to a certain dollar amount. The, the whole objective of the program really just by and large is to divert materials away from landfills. They don't want to see all this subdue of landfills. In fact, if you can even incorporate some of the projects, like the usage of those materials to recycle them within the project, they're more competitive in terms of submitting application. And we, Cambridge is very conscious of that, we're thinking about how they can reuse some of these materials in that same restoration project. So our call is actually this week with the Menards to report on that. The third piece here is the Rollins City, there's Mayor Rollins and city staff and some of the members of the Rollin Area Building Corporation. And we all got together for a downtown building tour because we're looking again at the Catalyst Grant, that, that funding cycle, the applications are now being accepted by the state. And so the very first thing you do is figure out which building makes sense for that and identify the property, see if the property owner's engaged and what kind of potential there is for a business or housing or what have you. And so we did, we did go through the entire downtown, but there are some structures in downtown building, I mean, if you're familiar, that have serious remediation needs and structural issues. However, the building that we identified for project is not one of those properties. And the reason for that is, is one, because the property owner isn't as gay, as engaged on, on this opportunity. But secondly, I, I want to see Rollins succeed in what they do and sometimes you can bite off more than you, especially if it's your first restoration project. The goal for any community I see is to one building at a time. And, but, but we benefit from the notice, I think, in terms of momentum and enthusiasm about downtown revitalization. If you take one where the property owner is easy to work with, wants to see the property restored, the city can, can take it up, take it and run with it and make it happen, then this other project can happen down the road. So, so that's where we at. And I don't mind sharing, but we have already spoken to the property owner. It's a seamy story property, has a bit of depth to it, like convenience or housing potentially at that, but it, but it's old garage, it has a garage front on it as well. And there's a lot of unique things you can do in terms of, you know, historical integrity of the building, given that garage front too. So that's the Rollin project that we're proceeding on. The other thing is Gilbert is exploring a concept of coworking space and it's downtown. So the city clerk, actually we found this out at the Economic Development Leader Summit, Sonya, the city clerk has found out that there are several businesses in town that operate on your homes. And that shows there may be a need for some sort of office space, meeting space, copy fax machine, that kind of thing. And so she, she asked me if there's an opportunity to convert the city-owned property that's behind a library to a coworking space. I said absolutely. So if we're looking at that idea of also engaging public time center for entrepreneur membership, given there's a huge startup community here in Iowa State, there may be an opportunity to even lease out some sort of small stays or hours or whatever at this facility so that they can make basic use of those types of office materials. I'm working to set up a meeting with Ravitate, which is in Rollin, that's a coworking space there, very, very successful, just to see what the function is, whether it's fee schedule and things are like for businesses that use it, just to get an idea of this kind of world of coworking spaces so that we can make sure Gilbert's making the right decision and informed decision about what it's doing. The other thing here is McCallsburg, Supervisor Paul's night has been at McCallsburg just a couple of weeks ago, talked about housing throughout the community, student building and the lots and what have you. But we also talked a little bit about a downtown structure there that's been vacant for some time, but it's, it's two stories. And that's important because for the Catalyst Grant, if you're able to have housing in your upper story, you're, you're much more competitive. A lot of communities, including communities like McCallsburg, which are bigger than McCallsburg, don't even have that opportunity. But I, I would love to see improvements here downtown just because there is a lot of derelict structures in that downtown. And that, that building in particular would really be a capital, core, so I guess you could say, for, for their downtown. And then finally, this should say help its grand opening, the junior's general story college helps its grand opening. I've talked a little bit more about this, this was the Rett's project, now to have basic groceries, supplies for community, for the community, it's very, very minimal, but it does provide basic, basic means for folks who are looking at certain goods.
Justin, how did the board's supervisors find out about that?
You know, I actually found out the day before that it was being, that they had a grand opening, October sixth. So I think that they just opened it, required no rent, so.
But you did find out.
I did find out, yeah.
Twenty-four hours notice is better than no notice.
That's true, they apologize.
Thank you.
So the other piece here, community and economic development, aside from downtown revitalization, meet from yesterday, we're going to hold a strategic planning session at the Rollin Area Development Corporation meeting in Rollin. They, they struggle with a bit of direction and visioning, so Brett is actually going to assist here with the meeting, going to have their three-hour session to, to conduct that among members. They're also using this as an opportunity to grow that board, to increase the presence, increase the presence of local business leaders in the community on the board. The other thing is Zering is providing opportunities for commercial industrial development. I think they're going to wait until they get this bankrolling thing wrapped up, but then they're looking at available sites. It's very conceptual exploratory right now. The idea is just to find potential locations for that. Preview industrial centers receive site certification status. This is a pretty big deal, we know, and I have a book here actually from press release on it, we know that eight hundred and fifty million in capital investment to date in the state of Iowa has gone to sites that are ready for development. And we know that site certification, based on the test data and evaluations that are done to that property, or those properties, that, that doesn't retire that a potential business would apply, would require them actually to, to be going. So they can cut that timeline by a year. So if you're attracting business, that's something that, that's, that's very important to mention in terms of the timeline. And even though it's at Ames, this is the second super park in the state of Iowa and seven hundred and fifty acres. And so undoubtedly, there's going to be some impact here as we recruit business to the other communities, just because of the type of land that's available and the type of business that will be attracting. Another thing, the city of Maxwell's received community black grants for infrastructure. This is one of only nine communities that receive this extremely competitive grant allocation. It's for, actually the wastewater plant improvements, it's for two thousand and three hundred thousand dollars. Communities throughout Story County were happy to have them for playing manufacturing day. We have this happen in every corner of the county. Last year was just a few communities, but we really want to move everyone who's had success, not because every one of them has manufacturers, because they don't, but they all have people that work at manufacturers. And so certainly wanted to recognize the workers in those communities and the manufacturers that exist throughout Story County. And then I'll be at CVM again in December, on the thirteenth of December, Community Venture Network, to attract companies or businesses to rural Story County. We're actually courting two leads right now from past events, so especially lately, this has been a really effective way for us to, to market Story County and to work with potential And another piece here, the final slide, we are being attended to the Housing Needs R and P, with paying attention is very, very close to actually, because we know that in our communities there is a pay bracket, we just want to identify what that looks like and what the barriers are. So some of the things that we've been doing as it pertains to housing, one, we have actually agreed as a role that we secure for land that can be used for residential development, that's a tutor option agreement. We're looking at downtown housing opportunities all over the county. I mentioned Rollin, McCallsburg and so forth. And again, I'll just reiterate that even if you have two or three housing units in a downtown building, for a town of five hundred people, three hundred people, that's huge. If you were to compare to the proportional population for Ames, that'd be a significant increase in housing. And most of those are four, four-year events. The other thing is looking at infill lots, we know that every single rural community has some sort of infill opportunity there, where there used to be a home, there's infrastructure up to the curb, there's just nothing there because the home is there, like where Andrew sent and torn down. Those really present a best opportunity because they're fully developed, pretty happy with the infrastructure there. Often times there's a question about local state codes and how that can work with infill development based on setback requirements. There are ways to amend your code ordinances to allow for infill development, for instance, you could create something like the O L A district. And that, that would be different for every community based on their code ordinances. But just because the current code may not be suitable for infill development, we know it's an opportunity and there are avenues there to see that happen. And then finally, McCallsburg, we have this date on us. I found that they have covenants on it, I was not aware of that until that city council board, which is, which is fine, it's just something to, nothing needs more about.
So, I was just going to back, I do meet with John Hall on Friday morning and so I've gotten the rundown on the forty-eight hour version of the infill program. I'm really excited and would like to make sure that gets discussed in the Story County Housing Trust Fund. Also about, there will probably be a role for us in this, but I don't think there's plenty of rolling this around this spring. So I mean, it's just very, very, notes on our paper, I think, pretty much right now. But it would, I think, address this. And I just want to pass on something to you, that's about McCallsburg, related to the McCallsburg discussion. So I had a conversation with a developer, there's a lot of, of how building in at least Ames area and some in other areas of the county. And I just asked him what it costs to dig a basement because one of the covenants in McCallsburg is you have to have a basement. And I'm thinking I'm going to give back a ten to twelve thousand dollar amount. He knew the properties I was asking about were in McCallsburg. He said thirty thousand dollars to build and construct the basement. So that may be something we'll use forward as we talk to some of the smaller communities about what exactly is it. Now, he did also tell me that there's not a big spread of difference between that, by the time you dig slab and go down three feet, et cetera, then it may not be that much of a difference. But I just will pass that on, that that's going to be an issue to, to look at in, as we talk to the small communities, is they want basements because of the quality of the housing, but what's the cost standard?
Right. And I mentioned to you and just for the two of you as well, in other communities, what we've seen is that they may have a crawl space. communities, what we've seen is that they may have a crawl space as an alternative to that, if they have to have a slab, the basement just isn't actually feasible. It's just something to consider.
Just a living challenge.
And the other thing is the Economic Impact Awards, our office gives out Economic Impact Awards, they're awards events each year. We released a press release on this, which you may have seen, but three companies just that I'd like to mention to you, that will receive Economic Impact Awards include gross in technologies for their investment slater, they are moving not only to downtown, only the slater that was nearly corralled and made for a while, but they're also opening their demonstration facility to treat slaters wastewater in a sustainable way, using algae to remove by treating groundwater. The other thing to add is, the landis facility outside of Collins opened in late twenty-eighteen, has had now a full year of operation. It's because of that project, though, that Collins was able to attract a gas station, and so every time I drive by that gas station, there's someone who's been a fuel, so I can tell it's a need for that community, a metal's being possible by that, a multi-million dollar investment by one of those for the grant facility, and then also we're awarding the city of Collins, the economic debt back board, just because of the level of engagement that our city leaders have had in restoring their downtown, forming as many vacant properties and businesses as possible, and making cosmetic and arts and cultural improvements. Recently, actually, I was talking about this at a ceremony, where they received a grant in store at the community foundation for a mural project, which could be, really ties to the local history, so they are consciously working and intentionally working to our community group and want to recognize that community for that. And then the final thing here is the Story County Community Foundation grant awards ceremony, so outside of my professional world, I said, I'm a volunteer for the Story County Community Foundation, some of the board are going to make a committee and their executive committee, and we dish out nineteen different grant awards just last week, now have a huge impact, both on small and large projects around the county, just a few of them, you're familiar with the Zero Fire Department Director of it, they received twenty-five thousand dollars for a major grant, the city of Collins is receiving a grant that I just mentioned for the mural project, the city of Collins is receiving a project for its downtown, city of McCallsburg, towards Willmore Center, we have the emergency residence project just here earlier today, they're receiving grants as well, Food Bank of Iowa, Prairie Rivers of Iowa for a monitoring program, and so a lot of this is, that's something I, every day through the foundation, I have a role here in interacting with these entities, and just in my last shortlist along, you can tell there's been a number of grant holders. Thank you very much. Do you have a question for me?
It was just amazing hearing this whole list of all the things that are going on in Story County, so thank you, open you.
Thank you. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Next, we're down, enter a motion for approval of this for an annual fifth meeting.
Second.
Edmonds.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We'll answer it down there. Then, consideration of personnel actions, I entertain a motion to approve personnel actions as listed.
I so moved.
Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Next, I would entertain a motion for approval of plans as listed.
I so moved.
Second.
Edmonds.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Claims are removed. Next, consent agenda, we've already struck item three, so I would entertain a motion for approval of the items listed in consent agenda, less item three.
I so moved.
Second.
Olson.
Aye.
Edmonds.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We will then go on, let's see. I so moved. Okay, so I'm just public hearing, I was doing a little public hearing today, so we're going to thirteen additional items, and Leanne Herter, consideration of website living policy after seven-day review. Leanne, what have you found out in the last seven days?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah.
I have not received any feedback.
Okay.
And then both the boards have received any?
None.
None.
Aye.
So was that from the staff that recommended option today, and we'll get all the proper procedures again, out for final technology, and then updating the website as well.
I entertain a motion then for approval of the website making policy.
So moved.
Second.
Edmonds.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Abbott, and Leanne, you have the next slide.
We do. Today seems to be leadership program day. We are, I've been part of the Leadership Nevada Steering Committee for a great number of years, actually, I think dating back maybe to two thousand, two thousand and one. We're actually, Leadership Nevada is partnering with Leadership Ames this year. We're switching to the calendar year to match Leadership Ames' schedule. We had always kind of gone more of a semi-academic, it was kind of wonky calendar, actually, that we followed, so this makes sense. As part of our steering committee discussions, I wanted to get back in front of the board's new determinable ongoing support for Leadership Nevada. One, as the note says on the deck, if the board would like to continue financial contributions in fiscal year, past couple fiscal years, they gave, you've given five hundred dollars, along with that, there is a scholarship for one individual to go. I think we did that one fiscal year. Membership for Leadership Nevada is a hundred dollars, or application is a hundred dollars. And then ongoing involvement by my, my position in the Leadership Nevada Steering Committee, potential for Leadership Nevada class participants, I know in the past couple of years, we've sent a couple of students, or a couple individuals who have been around in the county government session, which right now, we're looking at a minimum date.
I have a question, Roy, Matt, first of all, financial contributions, you said last couple of years, I remember that we paid for tuition in twenty-seventeen for Erin Redwards.
In this five hundred dollar sponsorship.
Okay, you need to go back and watch that video again, because the discussion up here at the board was, in fact, I would not vote for sponsorship. We've got lots of leadership programs in the county, and I was pretty adamant, and they're at the board, and that's how I came about, part of about five hundred dollars we would pay tuition for a person to attend.
And it might be using over sponsorship.
Yeah, but I was adamant, no sponsorship.
The contribution that Story County gave towards Leadership Nevada fiscal year seventeen was five hundred dollars. Yes, and that covered the tuition for Erin.
So we did not get one in twenty-eighteen, correct? You said last couple of years, but...
No, and I would not confirm those, in great part myself. We sent students, though, I know Stacy here has just gone.
We didn't pay for her, though, correct?
I'd have to check, I know the county paid for me to go through it a few years ago.
Okay, so Stacy may be, but she wasn't recorder at the time, correct?
Correct.
All right, okay. I just, I want to make sure that we have the history on this correct, because I, once again, am going to object to a sponsorship. Daddy, just, you know, a tuition is one thing, it's for when we have an employee that is selected to go through the, and I can, we can discuss the process where Erin went, but there are a lot of programs in the county where we could do sponsorships that are leadership type things, and so that's why I'm opposed to a sponsorship that automatically gets to be on a thing, one thing, year after year after year, and not every year do we have an employee to take advantage. So, so thank you for that, that's great. And then I'll comment too on the ongoing involvement in the leadership program by county staff. Earlier this year, when we discussed, and this was back several months ago, when we discussed your work program here this year and your responsibilities, at least two of the board members at the time, Mr. Sanders and I, made it very clear that we felt that your ongoing involvement as a member of the steering committee would be something you were participating in on your own, that it would be your free time. We have no, that was what we decided at the time, is that you needed to wean yourself off of that as an official part of your job, and that it wasn't the same as outreach for you to plan the government day, which was the outreach. So I just want to make known of that, that that was previous feedback that happened during, and I still stand with that being done.
Does that move that? Excuse me, was that from last year?
No, this year, it was this year.
Okay.
I want to say it was in February, but I went up to go back and take a look. So that you're free to go home, just not, you'll have to take the time off from, count it as part of your county job.
And what was your reasoning for that?
The reasoning was, as we were taking a look at the types of activities that had, that was being shoved under outreach and special projects, as opposed to where the concentration of the time that was being spent on those that truly benefited the county. So we were trying to draw a line about those types of projects. I believe too, then, Box City might have come up at the time, although I know Box City came up in June, you know, we saw the presentation on Box City, but that was the rationale, is we need to narrow the scope of what is being shoved in as outreach or special projects to those things that genuinely benefited the promotion of the county, and membership at Leadership Ames, we don't hold a specific other position like that on any other leadership development, whether it be Ames or through ISU extension or anything, it was just this one spot, and so did we want to say, yeah, you could go out and participate in steering committees for all kinds of other types of initiatives that could come forward in the future, or do we pull this particular one away? And so that was the rationale.
So I'm looking at the, I'm over here, it looks like though we have three current employees that are part of...
Graduates of.
We have three current graduates, I think we've had, I can think of two other former employees that have gone through a leadership program as well. And then we've received a number of members on our boards and commissions are graduates of Leadership Nevada program. So Leadership Nevada program. So it says on here, Leadership Nevada participants, they would just be participants, they're not part of the committee?
Exactly.
Okay, which is unfair, but you're going to participate in the program, you're participating graduate, and how you have it written here.
So Leanne, could you talk a little bit more about some Leadership Nevada would be partnering with Leadership Ames?
Yeah, I should have expanded on that. For all the leadership sessions, the two groups are going to meet jointly, and one will be in Ames, I think there are four leadership sessions. Ames is actually guiding that, the Leadership Ames program in partnership. Leadership Nevada is housed in the Main Street, now Main Street Nevada program, and so our director, the Main Street Nevada director, and the individual from Leadership Ames are playing those sessions together. Will be participating in the poverty simulation along with Leadership Ames. I think there are three or four sessions.
Out of how many total?
Eight.
Four to four.
Four to four. There are four of them? It's three or four, I can't remember if we're counting the poverty simulator as one of the leadership, because they're not.
Oh, roughly, yeah, okay. That answers my question.
It is. At least for this first year, Leadership Ames is covering the cost for the Leadership Nevada, for the leadership component of it, there are extra costs that come with the leadership pre.
Well, I like the idea of Leadership Ames and Leadership Nevada working together, because otherwise, it's impetus and efforts, and it's better to combine them, and I also think that since that's happening, that might be a good time for the county to kind of hold back in terms of your time as a county employee involved with it, because there are bringing in more resources to it. I would be very supportive and would appreciate you continuing to facilitate the county government session, but I had voted for Supervisor Olson that, you know, maybe you would have personal involvement on the steering committee rather than as a county employee, because I've also moved to your program just recently, and there's a lot of things that are there that need attention.
The Leadership Nevada, the steering committee meetings are maybe once every other month for an hour at once, but I think we still, let's just, I'm comfortable drawing that line, saying where. I'll gladly take vacation to do it.
So the financial contribution issue on a tuition, I was discussing with Alyssa Wicknell a little bit about this, and I don't know if Alyssa wants to come up about how last time in twenty-seventeen, what we did based on the tuition option, is we put out a call and offer to all employees who lived in Nevada, correct? Okay, where they have to have applications, that they wanted to participate, and then...
And we have a number of participants in Leadership Nevada that also work in Nevada and don't live in Nevada either. Because we are, we are in some ways a generator of, especially with the growth, or growth in employment, or experiencing, are bringing other entities into Nevada. So the applicant, what I'm trying to say is the application for Leadership Nevada is not limited to those individuals who apply within Nevada.
I would be open to discussion on it being someone who's from the east side of the county, okay? Because I will tell you, having gone through Leadership Ames myself, there are people who are accepted into Leadership Ames that don't have Ames residence, all right? So that would be, I could see the validity of it being someone who lives on the east side of the county, or some, maybe within so many miles of Nevada on that, okay? But I'm not sure I'm, I'm comfortable opening it up to everybody who works in the county, whether they live in the county or not, or whatever. Do you consider the Leadership Nevada and the Leadership Ames both as training? I think that it is more of an awareness, and as far as the leadership activities that are included in it, it's similar to what we might be able to get, that we would offer through HR itself. It's been many years since I've been through, I was like class number twenty or twenty-one, and around thirty-something, so it's been a while, but, so I would say that the type of leadership that is offered is, would be maybe appropriate to be offered to our directors, possibly, or someone holding a position that already has supervisory skills or supervisory responsibility here in the county. I would not see it as in the beginning leadership type of thing, like we are often offered to employees through our HR department.
Thank you. Sure. So just self-acknowledgement, you're more interested in narrowing the scope of who could participate?
Yeah.
Like Leadership Nevada, or the others, like some of the joint sessions here?
Yes, well, and I'm, the interesting part about leadership, the leadership sessions being combined between Nevada and Ames, is from what I'd understood on the past Leadership Nevada, being a very Nevada-centric, okay, that it was a wider group of maybe beginning leadership types of sessions that Leadership Nevada had, but I'm saying no.
Okay, all right. So individuals go through Leadership Nevada that have lived here their entire life and their past mayors and have been part of the...
But the classes themselves?
The classes themselves, we have a healthcare, so there's both, there's some in Story County Medical, and the Farm Clinic, and twenty-three different entities within that. There's a school district one, there's county government, there's city government, and these are, these are the similar sessions, non-Leadership sessions in Ames as well. And we have an agricultural, I think it's just called agricultural session, we have an economic development session, I'm going to reiterate some, this is Nevada, which is, will be part of the volunteerism, learning about different boards and commissions that individuals can sit on. I'm not forgetting, I said healthcare, school, I think I said... Yeah, I kind of look at folks that go through Leadership Ames, who kind of become that ambassador for the community, and I think that's where, I have not gone to the class yet, I've spoken at a number of other classes, you have a very diverse population that generally attends, you know, some of them, that they are leaders in the community, and there are facets of the community they are not as aware of or not as educated on, to, you know, folks that are kind of brand new to the community, or have just gotten out of school, kind of brand new, into the workforce, and wanting to know more about their local community. You know, for me, I would be more up to having a couple of them to, in a wider way of folks. I get it, I think Ames, you've got folks that did Leadership Ames, that lived...
I get it, I think AIMS, you've got folks that did Leadership AIMS, that lived in AIMS or they worked in AIMS. That's how I kind of see it, that's where I kind of look at it for this one. Particularly if you've got kind of that joint, those joint meetings, which I think is really good. I think everyone will get a more diverse conversation and broader information by having that. I would just be concerned about limiting who could participate, in my opinion.
So you're the only person called a P1?
I do, I think just because people can garner a bunch of information. And, you know, my second thing is, there may be someone who lives down the metro, but they work in Nevada area. So, you know, why would I tell them, I should learn more about this particular community and the things that are available throughout the county, just because you're living outside of that?
How many sessions is Leadership Nevada? Leanne?
Actually, it's 11, 12 if you count graduation.
11 full sessions on the school days?
They are eight to four camp.
So that's similar to Leadership AIMS. And we did recently with the agenda item, we found out that people have, can have conflicts and they have to be here for work. And Leadership AIMS only allowed one nest.
And that's only option that doesn't work?
That to me is a concern, right? In terms of how wide it can open up and just how accessible it is to people who have full-time employment and responsibilities. So I, that would just, that's just, you already saw with Leadership AIMS, how much time that takes for already busy employees. So I have some concern about that and weighing the value versus that amount of time.
So just to clarify, you were not wanting it to be?
I had a similar question because of the time commitment. And it would, I think, have to be very careful in terms of this is somebody we can afford to have gone that long? Are there going to be other things that we need that person here for?
Sure, no, I mean, that's a good point.
And if you open it up to any employee, then you start looking at, you know...
Do you have to that department?
We have to, and where, and how it's going to benefit the county, how somebody goes through that.
Sure.
I think that's a good point, and, you know, I went through Leadership AIMS as the publisher, the owner of my own business. So the thinking about it, I know we have some time restrictions, and I'm thinking about if we open it up to all employees, are we automatically discriminating against some people on the supervisory level? Or someone who wants to move up to take leadership because they cannot be on their job? Yeah, or they have to take vacation time, whereas someone else might be released by their department head or elected official. I've not thought about that as a concern.
Yeah, I haven't.
Yeah, I'm thinking back over this. I suppose the immediate response to her this concern is that, well, they have to get permission of their department, their department head. That was required, thank you, Alyssa, thank you for helping my memory on that from two years ago, okay? Alright, the benefit, I guess I'll come back to the benefit of this, is that getting to know the Nevada community, because it sounds like still those that are not leadership-related are learning more about Nevada, okay? And we do base out of Nevada, it's our second largest city. So from that standpoint, to have an employee who, you know, to understand more about it. And the goal of both of those, not in addition to promoting, is to hopefully generate members of boards and commissions. Not that we would have a whole lot of our employees like sitting on boards and commissions, but I think our BAE is, and we have actual employees who are sitting on one of the commissions we would appoint. So, and I have no problem with the cost, as long as it's deemed as tuition, I think $500 of that. So now it's, it's well that is who might be able to apply that we would consider to be, to be of a benefit for the county, not employees, but for the county to have that employee go through. Alright, I'm talking here, thinking through more of this.
I just want to clarify a question, Leanne, I approved the $500 and Supervisor Olson referencing towards tuition. Did you also say that there is the $100 membership?
No, the application fee for Leadership Nevada is $100. The county has given $500.
Okay, so is the county paying the $100 in the application fee plus $500? I said it co-portioned as similar to the, thank you, that's what I was, thank you.
We paid the super tuition fee. Our own self-imposed to help with expenses.
I'm confused, you said we paid the super tuition fee?
It was a little bit of a joke. The $100 is included in the $500, so we're really, we're paying $100 basic tuition. And yes, we were paying, we called it all tuition, but we made $400 contribution. I was okay with that. We included a $400 contribution, voluntary contribution? Correct. Just, I was appalled to sponsorship. We have to call it all tuition fee, but we could call it $100 and a $400 contribution. Or we could pay $100 tuition fee, we could do that also, is what I'm understanding. See, that's, I thought until just now, the $500 tuition fee, it's $100. I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that it really will come to sorting out by the various department heads and elected officials as far as who may or may not have the time to go and have an accommodated schedule for that. To see if there's anybody who's even interested, who also would be able to take that type of time off from work and justify, because part of this application to the county is it last time went to the directors of internal and external operations, plus, were you in the selection? Okay, the two of them, they went through the applications to determine who exactly would be able to do it. And also, would the training would benefit the county in their current job? I think that's how you get it, right?
There was a format.
There was a format that they followed. So I'm going to make the motion that we go ahead and approve this. I guess I'll do the $100 to clarify, to give a plea on the tuition on this. And that we then activate the process to see if there's any employees who'd like to apply. With that, I guess the other issue is how far out that we, and then we open it to all employees of Story County, which covers the, doesn't have to live in Nevada. Do you read that motion one more time?
Can I just clarify your question? And I think what you're supposed to make a, make the motion and then discuss?
Okay, for debate, I make the motion.
Should I say, you can second for purposes of just motion?
Okay.
And I will second.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
So the motion I want to make, that's like...
No, okay, so now I just need to clarify. So are you saying not to do the 500, only to do 100? Because I only really say 100.
I did only say 100 based upon what Supervisor Mark had said about pointing out that we're calling tuition, but really we were going above what the tuition is. So I'm starting with the tuition amount.
So again, so just to clarify, so then we're looking at potentially only one person attending? If we're just saying 100? And that's what I was trying to clarify.
And that's how the motion is now, I'm open to amend the ones? Or just doing this one and then move on with another motion? If we're still discussing, I have a question.
Any questions?
Yes, okay. So on the consent agenda, before we pull it, because the scheduling wasn't working, we have 200,000 or 2,000 for tuition for two people to go to Leadership AIMS. Does that mean tuition for Leadership AIMS, which is the same number of sessions as 1,000 dollars?
Correct. It was $1,000.
Which is a financial contributions of the various entities in Nevada. Leadership Nevada has really fought hard to keep that application fee covered.
So does anything change then with the joint sessions at all with Nevada and AIMS in the...
Not this year.
Okay.
In two years, we might leave. We will be, Leadership Nevada will have to look at the application fee in a couple of years. If this first year, you know, we're laying here, we'd like to continue the partnership. Like I said, Leadership AIMS is bearing the cost from the leadership sessions, the joint leadership sessions.
And how many in the past from Nevada usually attended? Because at the point you, they're all, the list, they're all Nevada residents?
No, I understand that. My question is, did like three of them go through, is it two or three people that each year come from, or...
From the county?
From the county?
It's, we had several years, I don't know, attending from Story County. I think over the past 20 years, we've had five or six, never just go through years in Nevada.
Number two in one year, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's what I was trying to say. I'm just thinking one math they want to, but there might have been someone else. Might have been one year where we had two going through, and I don't keep remember who the participants were.
Okay.
I just couldn't think of who. And there's also the potential that class size is limited to only participants in Leadership Nevada. That we, that there are too many participants, there are too many applications to. And those will be discussed, I think, December 3rd. First week of December.
So our timeline then internally, if I can just clarify this, is our timeline would be to immediately put out the call. If we do this today, if we determine how many scholarships we would pay for, tuitions, tuitions, okay, we would pay for, then immediately the call would have to go out so that employees would still have time to be screened by our directors of internal and external operations. A recommendation from them would come forward to us, we would vote, and then we'd have to turn them back in for the December 3rd by some of that first week. Alright, first week of December, to have then our person considered among the 20 that would be attending.
So I guess to me, my question is, is do you want just $100? A potential just one person going through, or potential, would there potentially be more that might get accepted? Because that's my only...
We don't have control of that. For us, it's just decide whether we only want to nominate one person. Given the fact that we're opening it up to employees, all county employees, who, if they can get approval from their department head or their elected official, if they're already a department head, and that, that will be, it could be 15, we don't know, that would be sorted through by Alyssa and Sandra to pick out the one who or two who we feel would best, in their current position, be able to benefit the county by going through this training. So it's about three weeks to go through this whole process on top of existing workload for these two people. And I quite frankly wish we had been talking about this sooner, if we were going to put together a project that, oh, you got to show this out the door soon and find work in your schedules now to get this done. She could have holidays coming up. That's just my thought right now, for the time.
As we finalize the sessions with Leadership Nevada and the application forms, it is a tight country. One thing that I should point out, through those entities that do the financial contribution of $500, there is a spot guaranteed for class participation, class participation was.
Maybe that's why we did the final?
Yeah.
Thank you. Piecing together memories from one discussion that was turned up. So I would, I could amend my own motion, alright? I will amend it for two employees for the same, you know, all of these, alright? But so if I can get a second, if you want a second on the amendment? So we're talking two at $100 each?
I'll second that.
And I don't have anything to respond to on the time, except I'm really worried about the timeframe here. Given a brand-new director of external operations, the entire list load that the two, our two directors are carrying right now headed into the holidays. This is also the time when we start working on budgets, and so I don't know if the other two you asked, but Sandra asked you on one priority to think of till the end of the year, and I said, spend time with Lisa Markway and Alyssa and the budget. That was what I asked, okay? So, yeah.
I had two entries, two applications last time.
So, but it was for Nevada residents only, correct?
No.
I think...
I remember that.
Okay. Is there any further discussion? Is there any further discussion? Supervisor Olson?
I'm going to vote aye and hope for the best. I don't vote aye.
Vote no, the reason is that I, I explained. Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Leanne, for... I want to ask you to answer your questions.
No, I may clarify with Michelle Gasbon, who kind of has been the de facto chair of the steering committee, that if two applications are received by Story County for participants, neither of them actually are accepted, according to that funding, at least not to Story County. Is that the expectation?
That's the expectation.
Yes. I will verify.
Yeah, please verify the difference between an application fee and tuition. We're only paying tuition.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, let's go on to, Mike, thank you, Leanne. Hi, Mike, for professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for Heart of Iowa Nature Trail.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So what you have before you is a consideration of an agreement to engage our professional engineers here, Schneider and Associates, on designing the next phase of paving the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. So something that, as you know, we've completed our first phase now and ready to move forward with the second one. We've been fundraising already for the second one, and as you see here, we've secured just shy of 3/4 of a million for Phase Two. Overall project costs are estimated to be a little over $1 million on that. And the conservation board, of course, is recommending approval of this agreement. And in the meantime, we'll continue to look for additional funding to be able to reutilize less of our energy transfer fund, which we do have an available balance for the construction phase and this area. Any questions?
What do you have left on the energy transfer funds?
We have spent thus far, well, I mean, I'll back up, we have an available of 1.0... Let me give you the exact number.
That would be penny much.
We have an available balance of $1,344,654.72. We have an available balance of $1,344,654.72.
So if you don't get, excuse me, if you do not get additional funding, you've got about $327,000 you'd have to take out of that, correct?
Correct.
But Sharon, what should I, what do you think of getting additional funding from what you know is out there?
I don't foresee any other large funding sources available. We, the three quarters of a million that we got, those are our two big funding sources. I don't foresee any other large funding sources. We'll, we'll continue to look for smaller dollars funding, but, but we're not gonna come to the magnitude of what we did with these two first, the first two grants.
So we'll take you down ETF funds down to an over a million?
Correct.
When the negotiation for the original 1.6 million ETF funds was done, it was based around the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail. It was the compensation, if you will, for us allowing them to, to go under, wasn't it under, with the pipeline? And that was in, which is why then they initially, two more, three more to bill, voted to say that 1.6 million is conservations to try and plan with. It's why, if I remember this correctly, Assistant Honorable Markley also, actually has marked that already as committed funds. Correct. It's not in our, it's a general fund, but it's marked as already committed, obligated. Okay, so that they knew that they had that money. So I, yeah, I hope we do get another large grant, but given this, we always knew that we, so far, I've always known that part of the, this money was gonna go related to the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail.
And I will, you know, and yes, that's, that's, that's all very accurate. I would say that we wouldn't be able to garner the other support that we've gotten to date without that seed money. So we have used that, that financial support to leverage many times to get as far as we have.
So today though, you are just seeking the 42,300 amount, correct, in engineering portion here? We're not worrying about, at least at this particular point, an additional 300,000 or so that may be, maybe needed in the future, how soon?
Absolutely correct. Today's action is just this agreement, which is the 42,300.
And this is part of, as we've been discussing earlier, that we didn't have engineering fees built in on previous estimates. So when we say it's unbudgeted, it's based upon estimates, didn't have this.
It's unbudgeted because we, we don't have it and we haven't pulled that money out of the committed into the general, it's not in the FY budget to be spent. So that, that's why it's unbudgeted.
Okay, thank you.
And it, and, and that amount, the 42,000 is included in that overall bottom line as well, which is the 1,507.
Thank you.
So it has to be uncommitted?
Excuse me?
Well, it has to be uncommitted. Just come in.
It's gonna move from our general fund to as far as, there's another category, and I cannot think of the word right now, at least it does. And then it'll move to me as far as this particular project, that's what will happen.
Uncommitted, right. Okay. Any other questions? So then, I'm gonna entertain a motion for approving the professional services agreement with Snyder and Associates for Phase Two of the Heart of Iowa Nature Trail Engineering, the 42,300.
I would move that, but I would say that we use those energy transfer plans, just include that in the motion.
Okay. Is that good enough with the dollar amount, Sharon? I will second. Okay, any further discussion?
I will, I, Olson.
Aye.
Merkin.
Aye. Thank you.
Thanks, Tony. We have heard the department reports or other reports. Do, does anyone want to comment on any upcoming agenda items now? Now we have a form number two, comments from the public on items not on the agenda or may not take any action due to the Department's open meeting flaw, but may do so in the future. If anybody would like to make a comment, please come to the microphone. Seeing nobody moved to the microphone on close to the form number two. And ask if anybody wants to discuss any liaison assignments, community updates, or any other announcements.
I'll start. I'm gonna, this afternoon, I'll attend the Angel Chamber Business After Hours. It's gonna be at the Story County Medical today. Tomorrow I have, tomorrow morning I have the commencement training. We also have a meeting on the mission statement, I believe that's our second meeting, and then the preliminary canvas tomorrow, so it's gonna be a busy, busy day tomorrow. Thursday evening I have the boost, Boo Story leading children that will be held in Ames this month, so it's between there and United. And then I, since our next meeting is on Tuesday, I do have a morning meeting next Monday at 9:30, so I'm probably waiting till 11:00 next Monday, but otherwise, otherwise I'm here.
Okay, so first of all, I wanna thank the Story City Economic Development Group for the tour they did last week, all three of us were there, toured the EBC new building, which actually was just kind of the trailer, one of the new trailers that cost $100,000 a piece, $100 a piece. We've got to see those. And then we went over the new business center, which is the old factory mall in Story City that has been partially renovated and they're planning on doing all of it. So if anybody knows, wants 45,000 square feet, that's available, you can have the whole building for 135,000 square feet. That's how big that wall is. So thank you then. I wanna make note that I, at the AADC Executive Board on Friday, I originally told you on our, that we were looking at both the draft and the operating budget for the EBC for 2020 and the first look at maybe a draft of the strategic plan. Strategic plan was not there, okay? And it's not gonna be handed out for the agenda on this Friday either. So just to let you know, I'll give you a heads up on that. The operating budget, I, I mentioned it, I think Brenda mentioned a little bit, they're devoting on resources for workforce development, so we can expect possibly the increase in that ask. I think I've already mentioned that when they submitted, the AADC submitted their actual itemized expenses in June to us, they had laid out $10,000 more than where our contract would have split out for it, so we can anticipate an ask there. So on budget time, I'll turn those numbers in for discussion on that. So we should look at some type of bigger ask. This, okay, I also wanna mention just again that I met with John Hall, who is the director of the NEDC, Nevada Economic Development, whatever their C stands, or Coalition Group, Council, whatever, and, and whatever. So just to get an update about what's going on over there, and he, we had talked at the beginning of this year, under my chairmanship, about doing a quarterly update in AEDC. And so I would turn that to you, I think they may have one more meeting this year, Linda, if you would like to go give the update and then we're championing with John Hall. So this week, I'm gonna hang on to the Rascal training and the mission statement and the canvas with the other two of you. On Thursday, it will be the current local area development board meeting, where we'll be discussing the transition to the, the new local area development board, which is the workforce training program. So right now, I've heard nothing more. Right now, there's still 11 counties in our region that are still be designated chief lead election official. I'm also on Thursday gonna be at the Story County Alliance for philanthropy awards. Sign Rites have a meeting, discussion is fairs and budget, and I feel that if I could attend, we'd go, they don't tape it or they don't record it audio like that, so it's difficult if you know, go to get all the information right away. Then of course, that night is the Ames Area Metropolitan Plan update. It's a public open house, I think I was hoping that both of you could go too. This is gonna be an in and out open house where they'll show you where they look like we'd like to take it forward for the next update, and they'll be soliciting all kinds of input there. It's not a formal presentation, so you could come and go. Friday morning I have the AEDC board meeting, then of course we've got recognition for planning and development and environmental health department, where the VA supermarket, which in the past, what has happened is one, at least one of the three supervisors has shown up because there's a little bit of a kickoff at 9:00 AM. However, we're planning to go to the recognition at 9:00 AM. So then what has happened in the past is each supervisor has gone as they were able throughout the day for the supermarket, ten, usually most of the participants are there in the morning. And the next Tuesday, as Brenda Dreyer mentioned, before our board meeting, I'm gonna be up in early at the ISU Core Research Facility to attend the Iowa Reading Business Discussion. That's three early mornings for me. I will be the one with the really big circles around my eyes at the time I get earnings due date. And I'm done, thank you.
Yesterday, I attended the Veterans Day celebration at Ames Public Library, and that was very excellent. Also, the State County Children's Justice Advisory Council, I had heard a very interesting presentation there by Ralph Albee, who used to be a training school employee, who I knew from my prior existence and corrections, but now works for YSS and gets youth coming out of the training school into the aftercare program. The aftercare program they have is both for kids coming out of the training school at Eldora and is for kids coming out of aging out of foster care. And as we know, all this, Reggie sleep out and how that came about, because of somebody who did age out of foster care and died on the street straight with her after. So that was a really very worthwhile event to attend, and I was really glad to see Ralph, who's worked at the training school all his life, being in a new, a new capacity of helping get kids into an aftercare program. Because as we all know, with fools who are troubled in various ways, transitions are incredibly difficult. So they're having some good outcomes with that program. So I was glad to be able to be there. I think I've got just about all of those meetings, I'm gonna be one or two on my schedule as well. I also, probably Wednesday evening, will attend the quarterly 911 service board meeting. Not formally part of that group, but because I'm on Storycom, I attend those because there's a nexus between Storycom and 911, and aging system are setting up and a whole lot of issues there. So, and attending the visioning open house on a Thursday evening, thanks for that reminder, it's on here, and the AEDC board, and I was hoping sometime during Friday to staff the veteran supermarket over at Flex. So then, next week, my goodness. It looks like we're still trying to fill a couple board and commission vacancies, we have a couple more inquiries coming up on that. And then on Tuesday morning, we will do the preliminary of the recent election. So that looks like it. So busy, I think we all had a busy week, so is there anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
I, Olson.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. We return. Thank you very much, everybody.
Yes.
If that, if you're not, you're gonna make it, I noticed you had REG, you do have a little.
We're, we're, yeah, which is on 4:00.
4:00 AM. Like I said, that's why I'm gonna tell you, if you're too late for the 4:00, you have to.